See the.
I was on fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes early and I didn't figure that it really. We really needed fifteen minutes of just watching me. Then I forgot to turn it back on. So thank you for reminding me, Jillian. Okay, so we did call the order and next item for business would be additions. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none. Then I will jump into our first order of business. So I'll share over to the. Corporate screen here. Which is first a selection of trustees to fill the vacancies and then the oath of office for those trustees. So. There is a need for a vote since one was not previously taken to formally. Select the two individuals that will be filling the trustee vacancies for the next few months until the April elections. And then we'll do the oath at this time because we can't do the usual, which is. Where they would then sign the document and we would notarize that. I'll just read through and they can answer in the affirmative. And we'll handle the notary. Portion during non pandemic times. That's mostly an item of just needing to have that on file at the library and we can get that there. And the interim, the this recording will serve as record. So. The two trustees who had indicated that the board had indicated it and who I had talked to about the open positions. Were Matthews Audi and Tricia Brockett. So I would look for a motion from the trustees to offer the positions vacant positions to them.
I so.
Second.
I'll say Kathy motioned and John seconded.
Well, that was me.
Did you motion?
I did.
Okay. Okay. So since it is filling a vacant trustee position and we'll do a roll call vote trustee hindsight someone.
I.
Trustee church.
I.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Stroh.
Hi.
All in favor, motion carries unanimously. So welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
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 You all very much.
We're lots of fun.
Okay.
Forward to it.
Welcome to the team.
Okay, so the oath of office will. Take tonight, as mentioned, I will handle the filing with the county clerk, just letting them know. That the positions have been filled and who is filling them. And then the only other item here and I encourage you to take a look at the the packet. Is within ninety days of having taken the oath, new trustees do need to complete the Open Meetings Act training. It's not too laborious, but. It it is important. There's. With the Open Meetings Act in effect, there's a lot of interesting ways that. You can get tripped up. So kind of the format for meetings within the state of Illinois. So please do make use of the link there that's in the packet. And then that takes us to the oath of office, which I will read through and then. If you'll answer in the affirmative, we'll consider you official. For the state of Illinois County of Lake, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Library Trustee. According to the best of my ability. If so, answer in the affirmative.
I do.
Yes.
Excellent. Welcome aboard. We've got. I think three notaries on staff now, so. One of the three of us will line something up here so that you can do the signature and. We'll get that notarized.
Can I ask you a quick question on the Open Meetings Act? So I attempted to register for that today. Do you know? Are we registered? Do I register or do we register as an FOIA or an OMA?
You don't need to register as a FOIA.
Okay.
Just as an OMA.
As an OMA.
Yeah.
German grandma. Got it. Yeah. And then.
If you want to take the FOIA course, I'm sure they won't stop you. It's not the most interesting in the world as important as it is.
And then the the title, as you just mentioned, is library trustee that we should complete on the form.
Yes.
And is there a legal name for the library that we need to be specific about because it does ask for the full public body name?
Our full legal name is Lake Bluff Public Library.
That's it. Thank you.
You know, if I could just interrupt for a second, Eric, and if you don't mind, Matt. The Open Meetings Act is very, very important. Eric is terrific at being. Your guide through it and probably you will definitely trip up. There's just no way you can't from time to time in terms of discussing it or whatever. So don't be the least bit put off if one of the trustees or Eric just steps in and says, you know, this is something for the Open Meetings Act or. You know, just kind of guides you back to the way we should be discussing it. So that is not in all in any way a criticism or an oversight on your part. It's. It just it takes a while to get used to it because there's for the most part, it's perfectly normal, but it there is something. Contrary to. Open conversation and sometimes the Open Meetings Act. So don't be put off if one of us just says, oh, let's, you know. Careful of that or especially in an email or something, but Eric will guide you through all of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of things unfortunately with the the Meeting Act because. Really the guiding principle there is that anything related to. Decision making for the library is supposed to happen at an open meeting. Where public have a chance to hear the discussion and weigh in. Which is a great principle, but. It becomes incredibly easy to slip into discussing back and forth a bit of information and an email. Exchange and then to find yourself kind of. Like, oh, shoot, we probably wandered off where we were supposed to be. Where we could be so. Yeah, important stuff, the Open Meetings Act. Anything else that you wanted to jump in with Kathy or we?
No, thanks a lot.
Good to go. Excellent. Okay. And that will take us into the. Regular portion of the agenda here. Next part of which is the opportunity to address the board. So for the members of the staff that are present, do you, any of you have any interest in addressing the board since you are the members of the public present?
Just welcome to the new board members.
Yeah, welcome.
Yes.
Oh, see. Got Eliza here.
Hi.
So got to add her to the minutes, Janie. Eliza Jervy is the head of youth services. Does fantastic work. Okay, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We have two sets of minutes, one for. The October twentieth meeting, last regular board meeting, and then we'll jump into the minutes for the November fourth special meeting. So October twentieth first, Janie, thank you for getting those to me this morning.
Eric, you have to.
You got him to me.
Telling me telling me that I they're okay as long as I get him to you before the meeting because I am a procrastinator.
Well. Procrastinator or no, your work on the minutes is always appreciated, Janie. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Right.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And then our next set of minutes. Which were included in the packet are from the special meeting on November the fourth. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Not I would look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, John moved and Cal seconded. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed?
Who would dare?
Minutes are approved. And that takes us up to the financial reports. So. Jump into financial summary there. And I'll lead off by saying that we are up to the. In addition to starting the the budget process for next fiscal year. For our new folks, our fiscal year runs from May first to April thirtieth. And usually the budget process gets kicked off. Middle of November with the budget in its final form being approved in February or March. Depending on what needs to be ironed out. As far as the items that are included. We are also into the tail end of the audit process. Our auditors this year as has been the case for a number of years now, were included as part of the villages audit, our sickage. I received the the final documents just this morning. I've talked to Bettina O'Connell, who is the Village Finance Administrator. And she will be with us at the December meeting to go over the audit documents and as always, answer any financial questions that we have. So for our new trustees, you know, definitely take a look at the financial documents and if you have any questions about how those. How those work, feel free to besides shooting some questions at me, feel free to ask Bettina in December as well. She's a very good egg and we're fortunate that. To have her in Lake Bluff and she was real good about taking some time out to join us for a meeting or two. During a year. So jumping into the reports themselves. The first item that I would highlight here is the property tax revenue. So the first column here being the activity for the previous month can see that we got another chunk of. Property tax that arrived at one hundred and sixty thousand. So at eight hundred and ninety seven. Received thus far, we are still behind where we were at this point last year and still short of. Where we had budgeted to be. So. You know, I figured the next month or two will really tell how close we're going to get to the mark. As I mentioned at the last meeting, from what I've heard from libraries and Cook and McHenry, where they did not put in place, those counties didn't have put in place a property tax. Deferral program. Like we've had in Lake County where you can pay your property taxes up to sixty days later. Than the usual schedule that the libraries in those counties have been getting most all of their property tax money that they had levied. So fingers crossed will land pretty close to what we had requested for our levy as well. So I also want to draw attention to the fact that we got our per capita grant, which is exciting.
Goodie, goodie, goodie.
With everything budgetarily, all the challenges the state is facing, I wasn't sure if we were going to see that, but the check arrived. So that's exciting.
Wasn't we expected?
It is what we expected. They did not change the equation.
Anytime Illinois coughs up money, it's exciting.
It didn't bounce, right?
Is it not? I was I was weighing whether whether to throw that out there, but that that is the usual joke with the the directors. Circle on the on the North Shore that you got to cash those before they bounce. But so that's seven thousand one hundred and fifty two dollars and fifty cents for our new trustees. The per capita grant is an annual grant that you can apply for through the state. The per capita portion is that they provide you a certain amount of additional capital based off of how many people there are in your community. So they have a formula, they they plug your population in there and then what the equation spits out is. What the grant provides for you.
Eric, were the funds dedicated to anything special this year?
Well, they were dedicated towards electronic materials and bolstering for those collections. Which seemed like a really good idea and now seems like a really great idea. Because. We've of course seen a ton of interest in those collections since the access has been so limited through so much of the year to the physical collections. So. That will be incredibly helpful to have some additional money to bolster that.
Eric, you're talking about ebooks and subscriptions and stuff like that, right? You're not talking about hardware.
Correct. Ebooks, e audiobooks and streaming movie services. We'd also worked in that we would intended to do some outreach, but most of the outreach that we had intended to do isn't. Sadly possible. Under current circumstances, so.
Eric, when do we find out how much the grant is? Is it something that we know about at the start of the year?
We only know for certain when the check gets here.
Okay.
So. That's kind of the the big caveat and the reason that we don't. Usually work the per capita grant in is is part of a formal part of the budget. A few years back when the state was having some real trouble budgetarily and there was a while there that. The state went without having any budget at all. You know, we went, I think, two years without getting a per capita grant check. And then when they did start back up, it was. They had changed the usual. Numbers that they had in the equation. So it was for a much smaller amount. Than we had initially expected. So the seven one five two fifty is what we usually get and generally what we expect to get. But. There's always a little bit of a wrinkle with the state of Illinois. So we we try not to. You know. Build any castles. Centered on that. But it's helpful when we get it. Okay, any other questions on per capita grant? Okay. And I will continue moving.
Well, Eric, I've got a question just below that.
Fire away.
It's a question I seem to ask every month about the village contribution.
Yep.
We've eighty five fifty budgeted and when if at all did we receive that in? The nineteen twenty fiscal year. Fiscal year.
We had received that. I was gonna say we exchanged emails on that, I know. Here we go. In September for the nineteen twenty year, the contribution is nine thousand one hundred and eighty three dollars. That was for fiscal year nineteen twenty. That is, yeah, so for. Last fiscal year. So that generally gets. Included. Transferred over from the village as part of the audit process after the fiscal year has actually ended.
And also what about reimbursement due to the CARE Act?
Haven't received anything thus far.
Do you know what?
As far as reimbursements, I'm continuing to work with Bettina. It sounds like early in the new year.
Okay, because when I had conversations with village presidents regarding our levy, she she just said in our conversations that they that the village had done very well with the CARE Act. And I had pointed out that as I understood that we would be receiving part of that and she didn't seem to be informed on that. So. Just keep us posted on how that unfolds.
Will do. I had talked to Bettina most recently on it just. Within the last couple of weeks and my understanding was that. At that time, at the start of November, that. Some of the requirements had actually changed in terms of the application that. Things had been shuffled around at the federal level and then that got kicked back down to the local level and then all the local entities were running around. You know, counties were then following up with all their applicants, you know, look, the you know, the forms and the paperwork and the requirements are different now. So everything needs to be changed around a bit. So Bettina had reached out to me because she needed to redo some of the applications and then I jumped in and helped with our portion on that. That's my understanding of as far as where we're at and that it's been kind of. A moving target thus far in terms of the application for that.
And is that all expiring at the end of this month like a lot of the other funding is?
My understanding is no. Because the. The funds were voted on and appropriated and. Are set to go out.
Good, great. Thank you.
No problem and. Scrolling through here, most of the other expenditure columns are pretty typical. There's not a ton there that I would really. Draw attention to. So heading down towards the. Bottom line. Our total revenues. Thus far for the fiscal year. Stand at. Nine hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and eighty five dollars. Total expenditures thus far are at the four hundred and eighty two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars. With sixty five, six thirty five of that being this past month. That's nine thousand dollars less than we expended the same month last year. This month last year was seventy four thousand. Again, just because there's so many unknowns with our revenue for this fiscal year with everything that we have going on. And that's the property tax revenue being more uncertain and that always being the lion's share of the revenue that we receive. But also the fact that we're not open and not being able to do property taxes, take much in the revenue in terms of revenue and fines. Most of the time we haven't been doing printing. All those things are things that are usually. Not a huge part, but a not insignificant part of our revenue. And for the most part are off the table thus far in the fiscal year. So continuing to budget very careful. And. Thus far. You can see we're forty two, four fifty one, ninety three. Versus the five hundred and forty thousand that was expended at this point last year. So. Almost sixty thousand. You know, better than we had managed last year. So those are the financial reports. Any questions on any items included therein? And Matt and Tricia, you can always feel free to ask questions if you if you want to jump in and ask them on this. Bonnie, you too. And if you want, I'm always free to. Sit down and discuss and go through these with you as well. Some of the vernacular that the. For municipal accounting is can feel backwards sometimes.
It's Bonnie.
I'm sorry, Bonnie, go ahead.
In terms of any. What what happens year over year if you spend less than your revenues? Does it roll over to the following year?
Any difference between? The revenue and expenses is applied to the library's general reserve fund. So most years we try to make that an addition to the general reserve fund. That general reserve is the library's main mechanism for handling capital projects. So two years ago, when the library. Replaced the rough, which was in the neighborhood of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that was paid for mostly from the that reserve fund. So that that's kind of a. An important bit of funds that the library can draw on for for things and it's primarily built up by money that. Is carefully provided for at the end of the fiscal year. And carried over. Matt?
Yeah, just for my own notification, what would negatively impact our property tax revenue receipts? Is that more indicative of? Nonpayment, late payment of taxes by residents than?
Well. When we ask for a particular amount of property taxes, what Bettina does over at Village Hall is that she uses the. The EAV for the community. To translate that into a rate that then gets applied to everybody's property tax bill. So. The challenge in a year like. Like the current one is that. There are businesses that have closed. There's. You know, homes that are. Properties that that are not necessarily still. A going entity in order for that rate to be applied to. And there's always a certain amount of that, usually fingers. Crossed, it kind of balances out. Hopefully that'll be the case this year. There's certainly from what I've heard been a lot of folks moving into the community. In twenty twenty. But there's just been a lot more uncertainty and the deferral program that the. Lake County Board rolled out. As good a thing overall as I do think it is kind of added a little bit more uncertainty to it because the tax revenue is not. Arriving in the same schedule as it usually does in a fiscal year. So it makes it harder to gauge exactly where we are.
Thank you.
But we'll probably, we should come pretty close to what we had requested. The the biggest challenge for us in the in terms of funding is going to be. Our other revenue sources of which, you know, we had expected based off of previous years revenue to get. Ten thousand dollars or more on passport fees. You know, and that's kind of. Been a nonstarter. They've only very recently even started issuing passports again. From the. State Department agencies. Any any other questions? Excellent. Those were good questions. Okay. If not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I so move. Do I need to say one that Eric, right?
You can. Yeah, just motion.
Okay, I so move.
Second.
And Matt seconds.
Was that John?
That was Matt. That was Matt.
Oh, Matt. Second. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
And for anything involving money, we always do a voice roll call vote. So trustee Hayes.
Yes, I.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Brockett.
Hi.
Trustee Stroh.
Hi.
Trustee hindsight someone.
Right.
I think I got everybody. I got used to having. I got used to having just five names to keep track of. Okay. Motion carries, financial documents are approved and that will take us down to the checks. And check report is pretty straightforward, um, only one that I had marked down to draw attention to here in the report was for tutor.com. Uh, which is a fantastic, uh, piece of software. It basically does what it says on the box. It is, um, an online, uh, database and interface that provides resources for schools, um, age kids as well as uh, providing, uh, an actual tutor one-on-one experience. So, uh, we had kind of worked with the, the school district, um, you know, gauging whether that would be something that would be helpful there and then it approached the friends of the library who were good enough to provide the, uh, funding for that, so. Staff will be going through, um, the training for that, um, sometime in the next month.
Eric, who do you talk to at the schools, uh, when you, um, decide to investigate something like this?
Well, for for, for something like this, uh, related to the practical. The more related to the day-to-day workflow of the, the teachers it is, the more we'll probably just reach out to the librarians over at the school as well as Buffy Stoffler is the reading specialist. Uh, they're usually our window as far into what is practical and what is usable, um, in terms of resources. Teachers over there, for, for this one, I did also reach out to, um, uh, Dr. Leelli as a superintendent. Just to see if there was any sort of a, a conflict there, you know, i- if there was any issue that she might have with that as a resource. I, I know sometimes with the relationship between school districts and tutors can sometimes be a bit interesting. A little bit fraught, so I, I didn't want to. We wanted to be certain it was a, a resource that they would be comfortable, you know, having the kids make use of, otherwise there wouldn't be much point.
So you only, um, talked to District sixty-five? Did you, um, have any conversation with one fifteen?
No, um, Mike Simic is harder to get a hold of.
I believe that.
But we're, we're hopeful that, uh, it'll be a resource that can be made of, made use of by the Black Bluff students there as well.
Eric, I was just wondering, will we have a meeting where we can be introduced to the Friends of the Library as well?
Well, um, the, the way that it, it usually works is that the, the friends have their own meetings and then the trustees select, um, a different trustee to attend, uh, the each friends meeting. So short answer is yes. That, yeah. As, as new trustees, you'll have a chance to attend a friends meeting, introduce yourself, get to know them. They're a good bunch. Very enthusiastic and always very eager to find ways to pitch in and help the library.
I don't think they would mind having surprise visitors at all.
It would not.
Eric, do we have our, actually our attendance list? I didn't see it this month on catch, because that would give, uh, our new people a chance to sign up to attend a meeting if they wish to do so.
I am attempting to get a schedule from the friends right now. At their last meeting, they had, um, decided to switch to a, uh, quarterly schedule for the duration of pandemic. Though they also made clear that, um, we we should consider ourselves free to, uh, if we needed their assistance with anything or approval on anything to light the proverbial friend signal and, uh, get them together, uh, to consider.
Eric, um, Eileen sent me the dates for twenty twenty-one there on the website on the Friends page if you need them.
Uh, see, I should have checked in.
I just emailed it to you as well, Eric.
Uh, you guys are fantastic. So the next two dates that they have meetings are January sixteenth, then April seventeenth. So, um, I don't know if we wanted to try and, and fill those, now probably the January sixteenth, but might just wait on the April seventeenth and fingers crossed. Will be before that point trending out of, um, all of this.
Did we have anyone signed up for, uh, January?
No, we didn't have anybody signed up yet for January.
Yeah, I would like to participate, um, maybe I can talk with somebody after, uh, about the process or anything I should know ahead of time. I'd appreciate.
Great.
We'll put you down and I'll follow up with you a- as far as um, attendance for that. It's, it's pretty straightforward. They're, they're a really fantastic bunch. They usually ranged their, their main fundraiser each year is, is the mailing that goes out to the community, uh, though sometimes they do additional, um, smaller fundraisers. They usually manage to raise about, in the neighborhood of thirteen to sixteen thousand dollars, um, a year, uh, to support the library and various projects that we do.
Right, thank you.
Eric, one question on the checks. So overdrive, um, is that, uh, volume-based, those, those fees?
Uh, those reflect the purchase of individual titles.
Individual titles, okay.
That is the way that the publishers have chosen to set that up. And unfortunately, a lot of the publishers, uh, are presently using a model where uh, not wanting to miss out on the cost that they would ordinarily get from libraries in terms of replacement titles. There's usually a checkout count on, uh, what we purchase as well, so that after. Um, Martha, remind me what they top out, is it twenty-five?
It depends on the publisher. Most of them have, um, a lot of them are on a time-based schedule, so, um, every two years you have to repurchase the title. Some of them are metered checkout and it is twenty-six, some of them are at fifty-two. It's all arbitrary, um, but that's what they've chosen, so that's what we have to, uh, work with, unfortunately.
Yeah. It's not the greatest system. I would love to see more, you know, volume-based, uh, where we could acquire sets of titles, that would be nice.
And from a, from a budget standpoint, that's a, that's accounted for in, in the eBooks budget line?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
Though in, in, in terms of the, the budget for this year, we're purposefully overspending what we do initially budgeted for, um, because of the increased demand. And that's overspending there with the knowledge that we're, um, either um, underspending a bit on other lines where the need isn't as great. But mostly just funds that we aren't able to expend because of the unique situation as far as how we're providing service. You know, for a lot of the year, for instance, when we were closed, there's not been a lot of need to have somebody in cleaning three times a week because we weren't open to the public. So that's, you know, a shortage there as far as what we had initially budgeted for cleaning. We've got a bunch of things like that and kind of budgeting for a different sort of library usage this year versus what the budget was actually initially approved to fit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I so moved that we approved.
And let me grab the check range here for you, Janie.
I, I, it's on the, um, it's on the agenda.
It is. So it's fourteen, five, five, eight to fourteen, five, five, nine, fourteen, five, six, one to fourteen, five, seven, three. Cal, you had motioned. Do we have a second?
Second.
John seconds. So trustee Stroh.
Hi.
Trustee Heinselman.
Hi.
Trustee Zaudi.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Brockett.
Hi.
Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
All right, vote is unanimous, checks are approved. And that takes us up to on the agenda here, up to the committee meetings. Uh, there was only one committee, uh, that met over the past month. And that was the Building and Grounds Committee. Uh, which met for the purpose of discussing, uh, usage of the parking lot. Janie, are you the, I believe you're the Chair for Building and Grounds?
Yes, I am. Um, did I, did I give you minutes for that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I, I just know that, um, from what I remember of our meeting, the village approached the library wanting to have usage of our parking lot when the library is not open. And this is not the first time they've asked that and for various reasons, we decided to send them a resounding no. And I hope that was well received because it was a big enough no that I even volunteered to say it myself instead of sending you to do it, Eric, but you.
I sent him a quick email for you, yeah. Um, when I talked to Drew about it, he did indicate some interest in maybe following up with you, so.
With me?
He was wondering, he wondered who the who the head of the committee was, so. Still had some thoughts on, on the possibility.
So we had, I had a chat with Kathy and yet, and it never came up, which is interesting, so I guess it was, I guess they recalled it. We had had the same conversation before, so.
What's the rationale for saying no?
Well, it, it is multiple. First of all, they've asked us that before and it's, you know, we don't have that many spots back there and it's very, very tight. And the, the parking lot is not in great shape. Secondly.
Is that, is that liability or wear and tear?
Wear and tear.
Okay.
The fact that it's so tight, I mean, John, I don't know if you've ever been sitting down in the spruce room when somebody backs out of a spot there and it looks like you're gonna end up with a car in your lap. It's, it's, it's very tight parking. There aren't that many spaces, so I can't imagine that it would be that much of an advantage to the village. I don't know how well lit it's back, it is back there at night. I, I would imagine there's some lighting.
It's pretty, it's pretty well lit.
Okay, but, um, the other thing is ju- is just kind of a slippery slope. I mean, once we start saying, oh yeah, go ahead and use it when we're, when we're closed, I, I just, I feel as if, um, they're gonna be asking for more use of our space and what are there like six spaces back there? I mean, it's, it's not a huge amount.
My recollection from.
There, you know, there is the, you come out on the driveway between, um, between the building, between the actual, uh, wood annex and the house next door, so that would be that much more traffic that'd be bothering the neighbors there, um. I know, we just, we just didn't think it was a good precedent to set and that if, you know, if there's an issue, they shouldn't they should. The, the idea was that they wanted people who are eating at the restaurants to be able to park, but honestly, the train station is closer to the restaurants than the library.
Sure.
Also, there is a couple of parking lots across the street from us, you know, if they're all that hard up for parking, do something about that vacated bank building.
That's exactly what I feel like. I mean, why don't, why don't they go to the owners of that and say, look, you know, we'll pay you a small amount to use this or something, because it, 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 that was something else that came up. It irritates me to no end to have that stupid chain across that parking lot.
Well, I'm not thinking we should have said yes, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the rationale.
And the, and the overriding feeling, at least for me, is that you give them an inch and they're gonna take a mile.
Exactly.
So we don't give them an inch?
It's, it's been a conversation that's come up various times over the past twenty years.
Yes.
Aware of.
And they never seem to learn.
I don't, I don't know about that, but, um, I, I, I do know, looking back on the, the notes and the minutes, that the safety of that, that space has always been the the big reason for being careful with access there. From a staff perspective, once in a while we'll get folks that'll zip through from the bank across the street. And that o- is always a bit, um, alarming when, when you're back there as a staff member and somebody does that, so. It, it is very cramped, uh, in terms of the space there. Anything else to add as far as the, the parking lot? Uh, as, as Janie can is, is definitely, uh, attesting here, it was a committee decision where everyone was firmly committed to the, uh, resolution. Okay, on that note then, uh, looking at the other committees that did not meet, which were Finance, Human Resources, Intergovernmental, uh, Long Range Planning and Outreach. Uh, is there anything that, uh, any of the committee chairs for those committees, uh, would like to share?
No, not from me.
Uh, Human Resources should be updated, you know, the, the chair is, is Butler.
Oh, yeah.
I'm the chair now, Scott's longer with us.
Yep, yep, need to get that changed over.
Outreach as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Get that fixed.
Any, any thoughts about, um, adding, uh, some of the new trustees to some of the, um, committees, Eric?
Definitely. That was actually my next question was for, uh, for Matt and for Tricia. Uh, if they as a trustee's joining, had any, uh, interest or thoughts as far as where they might jump in, in terms of committees, if they had any particular interest. Otherwise, uh, you know, the committees in need of members. I believe outreach right now is just Janie as a committee of one. You know, Finance is just, uh, Bill and Kathy, so could probably use a third person there. And could probably use, I think, a third, another person for Human Resources.
I think my skillset would be most applicable to the Human Resources Committee and the Outreach Committee. So I'd be interested in learning more about those committees if the chairs and members wouldn't mind sharing it with me.
Be great.
Yes.
Sounds good. So I will tentatively pencil you in for those and we'll get you some additional information.
And preliminarily, um, echoing Tricia's comments, um, in terms of learning a little bit more about the objective of each committee. I think my skills are best be matched with Finance, um, Planning or, or Outreach skills and interest.
Sounds good. So I will get the information for you. And let's see. Yeah, and then put you in touch with the, the committee chairs. Yeah, and then put you in touch with the committee chairs. Okay, I think that takes us then to the end of the committee reports. So that would take us up to new business. We have two items for new business this evening, the first one of which is a resolution of thanks for the friends of the library. And the friends, you know, as we know, are, you're in and you're out, they're a fantastic source of support for the library. In a lot of ways, not just financially, they've been a particular boon, a particular help this past year in terms of the challenges that we've that we faced. You know, a number of friends organizations like a lot of other volunteer organizations in the area. You know, I've just been on hiatus throughout all this. Our friends, though they're, I think, getting tired of the Zoom meetings now. Very much jumped out there, got themselves set up, continued to meet, continue to look for ways to support the library throughout all of this. The letter that they had sent out this fall, seeking donations and support from the community was fantastic in support of the work that they do, but also of the library. If you have not taken a look at it and read it, I encourage you to do so. So after some discussion with Kathy, I thought it would be appropriate to recognize the fantastic support that they've provided us during some pretty challenging times so far in 2020. So.
About the friends last week. And if you haven't, I'm sure you all have received the letter, the coast go up to the whole village, but take a chance, it's a beautifully written letter and it speaks, it speaks so kindly of the efforts that the library put into challenge, the challenges since March. And also it humbly refers to their own assistance. They provided the software for the curbside, which is going so smoothly. And Eric's got some data for us tonight on curbside. And of course, we're back into 100% curbside. So that, you know, sign of the times. We don't know the future of that, but it's, we're so fortunate to have a program like that. And of course, we've gone from what, two days a week, Eric, to six days a week. So we're, it's amazing. But I really, I thought, I said, dear, we've done a recognition of them in the past. But I mean, I think it can't be overdone. They are an extraordinary group and they are incredibly important to the library community. When, when I talked to Kathy O'Hara and we went back and forth about the levy decision this year, which followed the parking lot decisions, there was a lot to talk about. She said, she was, you know, very supportive of the library, but she was questioning our decision regarding the levy. And she said, she basically said, and this was on observation from the finance committee of the village, that we had been closed since, since March and hadn't been doing anything. I was truly shocked that right down the avenue, there was so much unawareness of the efforts, the hours, the incredible creativity and imagination and you know, downright perseverance that went into getting our library working and circulating. And, you know, if you look at the numbers, it's pretty amazing what we've been doing and the hours that we've worked. Not we, meaning I, but this community, especially all of our employees. So I, you know, it starts with the friends. It goes back and forth and back and forth. And I just think that our staff needs a great pat on the back and that the friends should be acknowledged. And I, I will be happy to share this resolution with the village board. Because I want, everybody in town needs to know what everybody else in town is doing to, to make this a great little community. So I really endorse this and I hope that all of us are great supporters of the friends.
Yep. You know, every year they, the letter that comes out, whoever writes that letter just writes a beautiful, beautiful letter. And unlike most fundraising letters, it is not just a big bore. It's always tells you something that's worth knowing. It's done in a beautiful way and it's absolutely flawless when it comes to punctuation.
And coming from Cal, that's quite a compliment.
How's the grammar?
The grammar is perfect, but it's always absolutely perfect.
In the past, it's been Eileen Lack who's written it, but I think this last year it was Lindsay Bornart.
Lindsay.
I think she's been the one that's done it the past two.
Teaching her English.
Well, you taught her well.
Not English, but that's okay.
Okay, so the resolution that we have here, which would be offered to the friends along with a certificate that Eliza has been good enough to create for us. So the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the Friends of the Lake Bluff Public Library's mission is to support and promote the Lake Bluff Public Library. Whereas the Friends continue to raise funds that enable projects that enhance the library facilities and experience available to the community. Whereas the Friends provided a donation covering the cost of spring share, which has made curbside easy and simple. Whereas the Friends of the Library have continued in steadfast support of the Lake Bluff Public Library during challenging and unprecedented times. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Library Trustees as follows. Section one, the Board of Trustees hereby recognize and thank the Friends of the Lake Bluff Public Library for their hard work and dedication in support of Lake Bluff and its library. And then this resolution will be, a signed copy will be delivered along with the certificate of thanks. So barring additional questions, I would look for a motion to approve.
I so moved that we approved this resolution.
Second.
Stroh moves and John seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Kathy, Janie, when I'm into the building tomorrow, I'll get a copy of this printed that'll be in the usual spot for signing.
Okay.
And there'll be one of the always incredible certificates that Eliza puts together there for signing as well.
Beautifully done.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing there for a moment and pop over to sharing the statistics report that I had sent around earlier today. So earlier this spring, we had been working on putting together a new statistics reporting procedure. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we plan for that to be built around a new software package as well. Because the system that our former employee Ross had handcrafted for us. It needed a little bit of course corrections and changes over time. And without Ross on staff, we didn't really have somebody that was you know, up to that challenge, month in, month out, to be doing that high level coding. So fortunately, one of the things that Spring Share also does in addition to scheduling is it has a fantastic module for managing statistics. So Anna Fifehouse, at my request, stepped in, took a look at learning that, how to use that and how we can get that set up for using that for the library. So while this report looks in a certain amount of ways, very similar to the reports that had been coming out to the staff, which is intentional. You know, we started out from a place, you know, just getting the current reporting back up and running. A lot of the numbers are drawn from that new module, so they're coming from a new engine, so to speak. So I'll provide a couple of the number highlights here. And then I'll hand things over to Anna to talk a bit about the work that she's doing with Spring Share. So a couple of high points here, I'll draw attention, you know, up at the top as far as our circulation for the month and then for the year total for physical items. I suppose it's all items total, actually. Physical and digital. Fifty-two eighty-five, which does represent being down 19%, which all things considered, with everything that's going on, I will take. The, the physical premises are pretty quiet these days. As you can see from the total number of visits that we registered, which was just nine point five two per hour. So we have a people counter that is in, on the doorway going into the library and it counts every person coming in and person going. And then we just tally, take the number from that based off and work with how many numbers, how many hours we were open.
Makes sense.
So nine point five two average visits per hour. You know, obviously a bit lower than we've been averaging in the past.
You know, Eric, when I look at the numbers, I have to say businesses, you know, like restaurants and stuff would be thrilled with these kind of numbers. Don't you think? You know, compared, comparing them to what they had last year. This, this is not too shabby, given the pandemic at all.
Yeah. No, it's, it's not bad at all. It could certainly be a lot worse. You know, which is not the same as my looking at all of these numbers and feeling great about them. But there we go. But they could certainly be a lot more challenging. Our fiscal year total is, is down a lot more percentage wise. The biggest reason for that is just that we started out the year with a couple of months where we were pretty much closed in May and June for physical circulation of physical items. So only other item that I'll draw attention to real quick is the programming. So programming numbers are a bit lower as well. If you look here, but looking at the total program numbers misses a bit of the nuance. Which if we scroll down and look at the breakout there, we're not too far down on total number of programs for adults. And actually, our attendance is up over the last month. And up over the, for the year. Well, down for, for the year overall, though we're holding our own a number of programs. So we've really built up the online adult programs. Most of the adult programs tend to lend themselves a bit better to that online format. Things like you know, programs on different subjects, information, as well as the book clubs and knitting clubs and things of that nature. Those all to varying degrees work in fairly to really well as things that you can do in a Zoom meeting. You know, the youth services with a lot of the programs that youth services does, those are a lot more of a challenge. Usually we do a lot of craft programs. We do a lot of hands-on programs with the kids. Whether that's with the Legos, with the robotics programs that we regularly partner with. You know, and the growing number of programs that we did that were centered on computing and programming. You know, those are all a lot harder. You know, and we're still working and doing our best as far as getting as much of that translated over. But as you can see, it's a lot more of a challenge. And you know, it's also, I think, a little bit of a challenge in terms of engaging with the kids as well. You know, just plugged into Zoom or Zoom-like interfaces for school most of the time. I think some of the kids are just a little burned out.
They are. Is there any opportunity to have outdoor services? I know the weather is going to be a deterrent. But that would be a great opportunity to get kids' eyes off the screen.
We've kicked around a lot of ideas as far as what we might do. And probably would have had if we were getting started on really digging into the opportunities at the start of the summer. Could maybe have looked into, you know, more things like gardening and planting and things like that. We haven't had too many things that we've landed on that are really doable with the exterior space that we have, which is really nice, but does not accommodate a huge number of folks with social distancing.
Eric, we're doing the story walk.
We are going to be doing the story walk. Thank you for reminding me. That'll be one that we'll, that we'll have. It'll be a as part of the, it's a wonderful like life in Lake Bluff. And there'll be a different part of a storybook. I believe it's
Snowman at Night.
Snowman at Night. I knew there was night and snowmen, but I was having trouble stringing the words back together. Snowman at Night will be the book and there'll be a part of it in each window downtown, each shop window. And they'll have art that goes with the theme of the book.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So that's representative of the kind of things that we're building, but it is requiring a bit more outside the box thinking.
I
because it doesn't directly translate as neatly as a number of the adult programs do.
Sorry to, one thing we are going to be doing with Winter Reading Club or one thing that we did when we were working with figuring out activities is we tried to include a lot of non-screen time things, both, and this is for, for all ages, for adults, teens and children. So hopefully that too will present a non-Zoom option that people will enjoy.
Thank you.
We also have seen really good numbers with our grab and go crafts, which we try to have on offer pretty much at all times.
Last week I attended one of the library Zoom programs with some different things you can do on Google. And Carol mentioned at the time that the attendance is better at these programs when they are given in the evening rather than the afternoon. I don't know that that was true when people actually went into the library for the program. But apparently, when they're doing it virtually on Zoom, she does get better attendance for the evening programs than the afternoon program. So she was saying she was going to schedule more evening programs.
Makes sense. And I think as well, there's the there's not a ton of great local safe, socially distanced things to do for people in the evening right now.
Yeah, true.
So on that note, I will.
Eric, can I ask a couple of quick questions on here?
Yeah, fire away.
With regard to the website usage, why are we not able to report on that?
Martha, maybe you could jump in on that. I know that we just got the new website up and running.
Yes, I still, I'm working with the Nikki Snowblin, who handles some of the the website maintenance on getting Google Analytics set up, which we previously didn't have on the old site and needs to get set up on the new site. So I'm hoping by the end of the year, I need to follow up with, on it, with an email that I had, I'd sent her. But that is in progress. Yeah, the reason I ask and thank you for that, I looked at the site today just to see what tags were firing. So I saw the GA was on there. If I can be of any assistance there, this is an area of professional acumen for me. So you know, this, I think this is, the website may be a very good talisman for what are, at least by implication, what our community is looking for in the library in terms of what they're searching for when they're, where they're going on the site. And that might be instructive for us, not only in terms of circulation acquisition, but also in terms of programming. So I'd be more than willing to.
more than willing to to help or to brainstorm there in terms of ways that we can use the website as as sort of a litmus test for what we might consider going forward as a board.
That's great to know. Thank you.
The other question I had for you, Eric or or team is with regard to, I guess it was just the 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 teen services summary. Did we do something special in October of fiscal year twenty nineteen? Or eighteen to nineteen? Because I'm looking at the the three and two sixteen attendance. But then I didn't see that two sixteen attendance carry over to the the fiscal year to date. So I wasn't sure if I was misreading that.
Yeah, that would definitely be a particular program in eighteen nineteen. Anna, did you jump in there?
Yes, I was just going to specify that the statistics from nineteen twenty and eighteen nineteen are based on the report that I pulled for October from our current statistics program. And we are aware that there are some things that are firing in error on that. We do have other versions of these numbers somewhere and those will be in the new program. It was mostly I was putting this together very quickly. So.
Yeah, that's not, that would have been under my preview. I can't remember anything specific that happened.
Many golf, many golf happened. But I can't remember if we divided it among.
It wouldn't have been two sixteen, though.
The one thing I observed is that the adult services program attendance was also two sixteen. So I just wasn't sure. And again, I'm just trying to learn here. I'm not. There's no nothing else other than just understanding the numbers.
That is definitely a possibility to that either the report was misfiring or I might have copied the wrong number in that one.
And then the last question I had, in terms of technical services, do we do we have a goal or is there a method of assessment in terms of like acquisitions versus deletions?
Well, the golden rule of thumb for for the library is that we're full. So
Net zero.
That, yeah. So that's that's the ultimate goal is as much as possible to have that as a net zero at the end of the year. That as much stuff is is leaving as is coming in. So sometimes that evens out over multiple years. As you can see, is kind of the case there as we do various projects through certain collections, but net zero is the goal.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, I should hand things over to Anna to talk about her work with Spring Share. Did you have a report that you were going to share here? I think I have the ability to let you share things.
Oh, I think it's just letting me. So let's see. Ta-da. Okay.
Ah, well done.
Essentially, the goal with this project is we're designing a platform for recording and analyzing our statistics. That's going to both match requirements for what we need internally for reporting and externally for state reporting. And we're looking to streamline that as much as possible so that everything is together in one place and very understandable. We're also looking for something that has more flexibility in it with the ability to add and take away statistics as we add and take away databases and other things such as curbside this year is brand new. So we're using Lib Insight, which is the statistics portion of the Spring Share software. It is web-based and that has been really convenient this year because we can work in it from anywhere. And it also allows us to create like centralized data. So first, what we've already done is I've begun building data sets for our different statistic categories such as circulation, programming, curbside, digital resources. And this is just an example of what one of those looks like. This is our physical and digital circulation numbers. So we have our full breakdown and then we have our totals down here at the bottom. And we can run these numbers once everything's entered for fiscal year, for calendar year, for a single month. It's really flexible for us as far as what we're looking at. Right now I just have from this fiscal year going forwards showing. The other thing that we can do is create something Lib Insight refers to as a dashboard, which essentially lets us bring together data from various data sets in a clear and presentable way. So right now, this is an assembly of basically everything that I have built so far. So we have graphs available for all of our circulation divisions. And these are live graphs, so we can hover over to see specific numbers. We can, for example, turn off the total so that we can see better the breakdown of individual sections. And among these, I was going to highlight the programming and curbside statistics. So here we have our programming from June onwards and we can see kind of that we're starting to trend up. The anomalies here in July came from some story time programs that we were doing on Facebook, I believe. So we were getting a lot of views from that. Unfortunately, the publishers have changed their restrictions and we can't do those any longer. Curbside data, I'm not. So we started in June and most popular was, of course, July because we weren't open to the public for access until late July. And it started trending down as we had more open hours and we are seeing a significant increase just now as of November, I believe. The report that was sent out, I think, said our total was eight hundred thirty, and it's already up to eight fifty just from reservations today. So we're seeing great improvement there. Okay, so essentially, from this point forward, what we're looking for is to determine how we want this report to look at its final stages. What variables do we want to be able to see? What do we need so that we can easily translate it to state reporting? How do we want this to be presented for you, the board, every month? And once we've figured out all of that, it's a matter of entering all the data, tracking down all the numbers and getting that up and running. Does anyone have any questions?
Looks like a wonderful tool.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Anna, for compiling this. I'm just curious, since I'm new to the to the board and also new to the community. Is there a way to further? You know, without going into analytical overdrive here of labeling to a certain degree what the programs are or providing a greater level level of specificity to each? Like when you see those spikes, you know why that happened?
Yes, um, so. Well, that data is definitely available through LibCal is what we're currently using to register all of our programming events as well as our curbside spaces. And it has built into it a very advanced statistics program. We can essentially run statistics for any time period, audience, we can determine by age range. And we can also look at individual events. Somebody have an example I could search up here?
It was July twentieth or July twenty-second was the program we did for Re Between the Ruins.
Yes, that one was. I will try twentieth.
I thought it was a Wednesday, so for the twenty-ninth.
All right, we'll try the twenty.
An evening with, you can try it that way.
Okay.
That one was a joint program. Would that still be?
It was a virtual evening with.
Okay, I can access it through here much easier. So we'll go to July. And see.
On the twenty.
Virtually. So we can see here the actual attendance we recorded was two hundred and fifty.
Okay, so it looks like there's functionality, even if it's not labeled within the graphs, that you could reference the calendar and see you could match up the events. So I'm just happy to see that that pairs well with the calendar.
Yes, we also, the graph is only one portion. The programming database itself is broken into the statistics that we have in our larger worksheet, which is the number of programs, the attendance for each age category, and then we do calculate average attendance per program. So that could certainly be created into a graph.
Thanks, Anna.
Were there any other questions?
Okay. If if not, then thank you, Anna. And thank you for all your work. Anne has been with the library since twenty fifteen. She's incredibly capable and efficient. And we've been finding progressively more and more projects for her to to do as a result. So hopefully she'll be with us for a while yet. We're kind of hoping that she'll do library school at some point. So, okay, I will keep a keep the board posted as the we continue to build the statistics reporting. And that takes us up to well, really takes us up to the director's report. There's not much to report in old business under the fundraising project. It still isn't really feasible to do a lot of the kickoff as as far as the capital campaign that we had been planning for in February and March. Fingers crossed it will be again in the future. The foundation is working still on crafting an end-of-year report as far as the the state of affairs. Just because that is still important, important to let the folks know that have donated already to that that it is still a project that's going to happen, that it is still something that's a going concern and that it isn't money that's just vanished into the ether. I think that's very important as far as having that conversation with with donors during what are some pretty challenging times. In terms of adding a couple of things in with the director's report, in addition to the items that are in that document, I can report that Eliza and I learned today that Sora is now in place. That was the connection between our Overdrive ebook and the audiobook database and the the schools database that they purchased from Overdrive so that the the kids, when they they log in, they can just log in once and see both collections rather than having to take their library card and school ID and hot between both.
That's Sora. You said S O R A.
Yep. Uh, so that's very exciting to have that in place. We have transitioned pretty smoothly to to curbside. And I would say with the news that came out today, you know, we had bet and discussed earlier this afternoon, the staff planning committee as far as what we might need to do in terms of actions to comply with the new tier three restrictions. And the the sense, I think, with the restrictions that that came down is that we're pretty good and there isn't much that we really need to do, which is kind of a strange new experience in twenty twenty to be not having to jump when, you know, the new restrictions came out. So I had kind of figured, I'm sure most everybody's seen those by now. Pritzker announced those at his press conference earlier today. Kind of figured something like that was in the works. We were we being the folks in Region Nine and Lake and McHenry were eligible for additional restrictions on Saturday. Uh, and when we did not get those handed down, I kind of figured it was quite probably because there was going to be a overarching plan that was going to be put into place that would make it not a good idea to kick us into that already. So there are a lot of limitations back in place. As part of that, back to a restriction on just on outdoor dining alone, indoor dining is off the table for for all the restaurants in the state again. Ten people max for gatherings. You know, a a lot of items that are going to be pretty challenging, I think, for a lot of institutions. We are, as with us, the story walk, trying to as much as we can draw attention to and partner with businesses and organizations in the community during what's pretty challenging time.
Eric, question. Is there many Bill or Matt or Tricia now this? Is the events on Saturday and Sunday for signature gathering still happening?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't you tell us about that in case?
Paul Blahunker sent out a some some information. I think it's going to be for three hours on Saturday and Sunday. And there's three ways you can do it. You can elect to do it on your own outside of the event. Or you can go yourself. If you don't feel comfortable going yourself, you can get a designee to go there for you and and take part in it. They're going to have everything. I think the six areas are going to be signposted and then you're going to sit in those areas. Cars are going to come by and you're going to bring up the petition things to sign. And they're going to notarize everything as well. They'll fill everything else once those things are.
So it's it's a drive-through. People remain in their vehicle.
Yes.
So the different stations and candidates.
That's my understanding. That's what it looks like. And and I think for the library, they're looking at anywhere from sixteen to sixty-six signatures is what they what the 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 numbers were.
Well, good luck, everybody.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Kathy, because I did have a few concerns just with it being, is it essential or is it non-essential? Because I have to be careful with my children. They're still doing in-person learning. Since they're, you know, they're not in elementary schools yet. They're still pretty young. So I would have to explain that to the school that I'm interfacing, you know. But it sounds like it will be safe enough to where a volunteer is going to go back and forth and get the signatures.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be, you know, directly coming in contact with with that amount of people. So I do, I did feel better about it with the safety protocols that they have in place. But I do question, well, if everyone else is being told to stay at home, are they going to come out and sign? I don't know.
Yeah. And when you say someone's, you could be a designee, what you could be a designee to do what to sign?
To 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 even just go down there to participate. Let's, I was explaining to Eric. I I've got COVID at the moment, so I I will not be able to go down there on the Saturday or Sunday. But I've I've already collected a number of signatures already, so I'm probably going to be opting to just to collect them at at a later date. But but again, if someone didn't feel comfortable, as as Tricia is saying, going to the cars, there will be somebody there who'll go back and forth to collect the signatures. If you're there just present in 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 there, but it it's a good question. I don't know how that will be different now with what just has been announced. Where they're saying, you know, if you don't need to be out there, don't go out there.
How are you feeling, Bill?
Um, I'm actually, I've got, I think, very sort of mild symptoms. It's it's sort of weird that of of our family, we do, we don't know how the person who got it got it in here, but once it got in there, we know how it spread. But it's it's actually the kids that are the worst off than than the adults. And and then and not severe, but just sore throats, tightness of chest. And then, and not severe, but just sore throats, tightness of chest.
Yeah.
Mine was just more, or still is, I mean, day five, but more sort of light flu-like symptoms. But no, it's still, still very functional, but we've been using Uber Eats and Instacart and all these other things. So no one's left the house.
Yeah, I hope you feel better and your family too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, thank you.
Take care.
Bill, you mentioned the number sixteen to sixty six in terms of signatures. So I was just trying to understand that a little bit better. The, the form we have has ten, ten blanks on it.
Yes.
Is there, is there a critical mass? Is there merit in getting more? Like how, how, is, is there just a threshold you need to surpass? What, what, how does it work?
I, I, I think that the more you have, the better. I was, we talked here at our household just to get, you know, if I got thirty signatures, I should be fine. In case anybody wanted to question any one of the signatures, but I'm not sure how, how strict it is. You know, if my name was on every single one of the sheets, then that would be a, be a, maybe a concern. But yeah, generally just, it, it looks like it's just a ten, gets notarized and, and gets put together then for the final submission.
It could be quick, it could be relatively quick then.
Yes.
Depending, again, on who comes out.
Exactly. I think it's two, three hour sessions.
I think it's one to four.
Is it one, yeah, one, one to four on both days? Yeah.
Yeah. Well, good luck, everybody. This is, I think everybody is kind of sick of elections anyway. On top of this, I mean, I thank you all for participating in this. It's and Bill, you take care, all your family.
Yep, no, we're, we're doing fine. We, we just got to string it out.
What are the dates that these signatures are going to be gathered?
Saturday and Sunday, and it's at the elementary school.
Oh, this, this coming?
Yeah, this coming, yeah.
New first and twenty second.
If you ride around town, those yellow signs that are on people's lawns, they're kind of.
I have one on my lawn, but you should go read it. Alright.
Okay. I can, I can, I've got some information from the Vote Lake Bluff Committee. I can forward that around if that would be helpful to everybody as far as exactly what, what they're working on. They're working very hard to do this as safely as possible. And the, the signatures are still very much a requirement as far as getting on the ballot. So it's pandemic, but we still got to do it. Okay. A couple of other items that I was going to throw in for director's report. Lake Bluff Strong, we're gearing up, back up with that since things are heading back into some stressful territory here. Certainly with a lot of social distancing expectations over the holidays. And I think a lot of people are just getting burned out in general. So I've been in touch with Adrian Fawcett and she's got a number of articles that she's working up for the site. Kind of on the library's side of things, talked with Jillian Chapman as far as what will potentially be contributing there. And I think we're really leaning towards looking at it. You know, initially in the spring, we were, we're thinking of it as this great gathering point for everything that was happening in the community, all the programs. And I think really right now, most of these individual websites are doing a pretty good job of that. So the focus, I think, will be at this juncture a lot more on news and service information put out by organizations. Like, you know, if, if the park district needs to put out a bulletin that they're not going to be able to do basketball anymore because of a change in restrictions or change in service at the library, things like that, rather than, you know, listing all the individual programs that are happening. So that's ongoing as well. I had the Vote Lake Bluff opera activities. I'll send out information on those. Oh, at previous meetings, we've discussed the Lake Bluff militia folks. It's my understanding that the gentleman, that's the main mover and shaker for that group is taking a step back. But that there have been some copycat accounts on Twitter that have been set up, that they are not the same person that's been kind of the main engine for driving that group, but that it's claiming the same name and saying things that are kind of sort of ballpark for what had been kind of discussed as part of that group. So that's where that currently stands.
We've been impacted by that group directly or?
Um. Not as not the library directly. We've been involved primarily as the village has been involved and they've been active in the vicinity of the library. After they through long disagreement with the village, we're no longer able to meet on the village green. They got permission to meet on one of the vacant lots across the street from the library. So there were.
Who gave them permission to do that?
I don't know. It was on the.
In one of those number one parking lots?
That nice little oak grassy area there on the corner.
First of all.
They, they, they had a, a meeting in a fire pit and, and things going there one weekend. Which I, I think the biggest thing is, is just that they were right across the street, holding some of their events, I think, really caught our attention. We started tracking what they were up to a little bit more.
Eric, would you please explain? I did, I had not heard of this group. What is this group? And they exist. And what is?
Trying to limit myself to thirty seconds. They got kickstarted in early spring, late summer. From the get-go, part of the purpose of the group has been really twofold. Having fun, getting people out of the house and involved in doing stuff when everybody was cooped up and frustrated and the weather was getting warmer. But also right from the get-go, as you can kind of tell from the name, Lake Bluff militia being their initial name, there was a goal to be edgy. They selected militia as a name at the same time that the protests were going on, where there were armed groups that were going into state capitals to protest coronavirus restrictions. They did change the name to Lake Bluff Social Group and made kind of periodic efforts to work with the village. But eventually, really the, the village decided that they were not interested in working closely and, and updated their laws as, they're not their laws, the procedures and policies that they have in place for who can use the village green, how and when. I think really the clincher from the, for the village was when they had a fire pit that they put out on the village green one weekend. My understanding from Glenover Village Hall, that was kind of the proverbial line that they crossed there. With village wasn't really comfortable having them out any longer, making use of the village green. Then they've done kind of weird tangential things since they tried to get around the village restrictions by declaring themselves a religion. They.
Aren't they going to hold a peaceful demonstration or something and get around it that way?
They, are they the same people that just before the election, the Sunday before the election ran a big caravan of cars and trucks through the village? Are they the same people?
I think, I think it's a lot of the same folks. I don't know if it's necessarily the same group, but I think that's pretty.
And it wasn't just then. They were, they were doing it every Saturday morning. You know, I, I just lived down the street from the library, so I would see this every Saturday morning. They were parading up and down Scranton Avenue and driving all over town and they were driving all over the North Shore.
And they, they had, they were flying flags off of pickup trucks and big Trump signs.
Yeah, and the, the other thing that really caught our attention as potentially a concern was that about a month ago, they had kickstarted this initiative where they were going to out and encouraged to leave the community leftist teachers at the high school, that they were going to create this big list. They were going to identify these folks. They were going to find various ways to negatively impact the teachers so that they would go elsewhere and stop poisoning the children of the community. So you know, obviously there were some concerns with, with that group and kind of keeping an eye on that as somebody in the proximity that potentially would be something we had to worry about. I'm sure Cal, having been a teacher, that, the, the notion that these folks were making lists of teachers was probably.
An absolutely charming move on their part.
It's a charm. It was, that was, that was a charming move. I, I, I was happy to hear that they the, the fellow that's was in charge of this was opting to take a step backward.
Well, I thought that big parade. The big parade of trucks was a charming mood too.
Yeah, they were out on Halloween night while the kids were out running around.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Streets going door to door. Here's the trucks.
Kathy, you heard tell me that the majority of the members are not Lake Bluff residents. It's a.
Oh, they're not?
No, so.
I, I think, I think there's a, there's some that are.
Oh, yes, but not, not the entire crew that goes up and down the North Shore.
Yeah, because they were in Highland Park too.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, freedom of speech, we absolutely support that. You know, one hundred percent behind it. It's what libraries are all about. Though, you know, in, in terms of being certain that we're able to continue forward with our mission as far as the information resource that we're providing to the community, you know, something that we were keeping an eye on as far as the situation in the community. You know, folks that are making lists of teachers' names, you know, we, we figured at some point might get it into their heads that maybe they should make lists of librarians. And that would be not fun.
And books and biographies and what have you.
Yep.
You go. This job is never boring.
No, and usually that's a, a great part of it, though right now in 2020, we could, I think, use a lot more boring. Boring would be fine for a while.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, and that really wraps up everything that I had that I was going to throw out there as far as additions to the director's report. And barring any additional questions or comments from anyone, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I saw moat.
All right, Cal's motion, John has seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at eight forty-eight PM.
Thank you very much.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Stay well, stay safe.
Yeah, Bill, take care. Good luck.
Thanksgiving.
Take care, Bill.
Alright, thank you. Thanks.